Okay, great, sorry.
That's okay.
I hope this isn't a repeat question because I've kind of been going in and out, but um uh just wondering if the um uh I assume that the the engineers have, the traffic engineer has taken his templates or her templates and gone through um the new canopy to make sure that the, you know, turning uh works and everything, because it is obviously four instead of two. And um I just, you know, I wanted to make sure the engineer had been comfortable that uh those move area work.
Yeah, again, from staff's angle, Commissioner Graham, the several disciplines are looking at the project, not only the planner, but as well as engineering department, so I have to trust, believe that if that, if nothing came out of, you know, the review as far as negative or adverse uh particular comments or concerns, uh then obviously if there were, they would have come out in the form of conditions or revisions to the plan, so what you see here is a result of review from them, so unless Stephen or Gabriella have any additional comments or that with something that they are aware of that came up during review cycle.
Um I'll just add one uh one note, uh John and myself and and Sam have looked at this site for the past couple of years and um went through quite a bit of site plan iterations, and this is the one that uh we essentially thought was the best uh to move this project forward.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Garrettson, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yeah, a few, uh I'm assuming that the sidewalks will remain clear throughout the construction so kids can walk to school safely.
I it I believe the goal is obviously not to create obstacles, I mean unless there is a a safety issue, obviously that's gonna preclude somebody from safely traversing or walking through, you know, part of what could be the construction site going on here, uh but certainly uh that's gonna, there's traffic control and all kinds of associated uh operational uh type uh reviews and and approvals before that happens, so we would know about that before.
So there's no plans to have any construction on the sidewalks throughout this other than driveways?
Uh that's true, I mean as far as the driveway itself.
Yeah, Commissioner Garrettson will require that they fence the site with the exception of the right-of-way work, which will require a specific permit, authorization, insurance, uh licensed contractor, et cetera, that'll work in the right-of-way for the driveway work.
Okay, and will this be right-in, right-out on both streets?
Uh there is a condition in the permit, it actually talks about the right-in, right-out, uh there was a a condition from the prior project, uh specifically talking about Melrose, and uh that is definitely uh in the project, uh to preclude left-turn movements out of that one.
And my final question relates to what what the regulations of zoning and so forth say. What is the limit for the number of pumps that can be put in there? We're going from four to eight. Could they put twelve in there? What what limits them?
Essentially, site design-wise, there are parking requirements, uh there is a balance of other issues that they have to adhere to, landscaping, parking, uh and obviously safe circulation queuing throughout the site, so I think at some point uh they're not gonna be able to achieve, you know, beyond what's realistic for the site, and I think uh I think when I heard Stephen talking about previous conversations with staff and Sam and John, obviously they arrived at this design, which is the ultimate uh best design for the site uh in consideration of all the issues that are uh balancing act, I think.
So that's, the 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 issue is, could they come back with more pumps?
I don't know if it's.
Adequate landscaping, more than adequate, more than adequate parking, and the question would be, what would prevent them from coming back? Or is there anything that would prevent them from coming back saying we want to add two more pumps?
Uh maybe I will defer this question as far as uh Stephen Gabriella, do you guys have any knowledge of uh future or uh looking at this site again?
Yeah, that is not a part of this application, so if uh we ever consider that, we would have to come back to planning commission for it. So that is not the intent at this point. The intent is to build where it has been submitted.
But as far as city zoning and general plan, is there any limit?
No, there's not.
Okay, there's really no additional space on that site to extend the canopy or to add additional pumps, so they've pretty much maxed out their property and the use of the land that's there, it's being utilized as best as it can, and it really can't grow anymore with the number of pumps or the canopy.
Super. I kind of like what they've done with the landscaping and everything, I think that's gonna really improve the appearance of that area. So, thank you. All I have.
Very good, uh Commissioner Looney, questions for staff or the applicant?
Um just one, and that's in the um oh, I guess it would be the southwest corner on the site plan. What is that area currently being used for and what is it, what's the proposed use? It's where we have trash enclosure and it backs up against um four or five other parking spaces.
Right, it looks like it's an open area there that's left uh untreated, I said. Um Stephen Gabriella, do you guys have any information on that that you can provide for clarification purposes? It's that open area in the back of the site.
Yeah, it actually currently is a, just an asphalted area that they I I'm not quite sure what they use it for currently, I think I've seen some people park back there um and a tent and yeah, essentially what we have done is to prevent the parking from there in unrecorded spaces. We're adding quite a bit of landscaping in that area. I think there's a couple of trees back there, um as well as some uh nice zero-scape landscaping uh for the landscape plan, and so we intend for to to use that space to increase our landscape percentage uh and create an area that um would prohibit parking.
Okay, okay, thank you, Stephen.
Of course.
Is that it? Done?
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh Commissioner Aguilar, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Um I guess comments at this point, um most everything's been asked, so this is definitely an improvement from what's been there for many, many years. Um the only comment or question I had was about the entrance and exit on Melrose, the same concerns that Commissioner Kramer had. Um I would just like to see it further down on the property, further south, um but other than that, um I have to trust, it's well, let me ask this question, it's the same exact one that's there now though, right? We're not moving it any further north?
I believe that's the case, uh Stephen.
It's in the s- it's in the same location, um it is updated to city standards uh to create ADA access across that driveway. Really, our site plan iteration that we've provided uh works the best if it is in that location, it does provide a um a wide enough fire access for a truck to get through there, um as well, it does provide access for our truck turning movement for for our um underground storage tanks. Um and so moving that driveway further south would be problematic for the site plan.
So, and it's being widened to thirty feet on the site plan is identified as thirty feet wide, the one on Melrose?
Um I'm sorry, I don't remember what the existing width is, uh but thirty feet, I believe, is your uh your widest city standard. And uh we think that that's the best option for the site.
Okay.
Okay, is there any way that um you can prevent people from cutting across the parking lot from Olive to Melrose?
Oh.
Because we have a school there right next door, and I see that a lot in town um where I even seen a business actually have to block one of the entrances because people are cutting through driveways to avoid the red light or, you know, people presumably following the 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 law and uh providing safe, you know, crossings for children in this case.
I think that the new, the new site configuration, the new location of the pumps will discourage that. I think that probably happens a little bit more because we have one additional driveway and because the pumps are all the way at the corner of the site with the new configuration, I think it, that would be uh reduced quite a bit.
Okay. Yeah, I know there's not a lot that can be done, but you're probably right, I didn't think about that, okay, thank you.
Right, uh that concludes Commissioner's comments uh and questions, uh I will now open the public hearing. Ms. Chow, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the commission on the on the special use permit?
Uh I again, I have one that I do not recognize as just listed as owner, so I'm not sure if you're here for the first public hearing item, the seven-eleven special use permit amendment, uh and if anybody is wanting to uh speak on this item, please raise your hand uh so I can recognize you at this time. And I don't see any hands uh being raised at this point, Chairman Rosler.
All right, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to discussion amongst the commissioners, Commissioner Kramer, any comments?
No, I think they've done a really good job. I I think these are, these are, obviously these improvements have been needed to be done for a long time, and I think they've really stepped up to the plate with the, using the new logos and everything that they have for seven-eleven. And um I think Gabriella was absolutely correct with 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 the new pump location being moved back towards that that um en- entrance into the seven-eleven, there's not gonna be any way for people to, because I've seen it as Commissioner Aguilar said, I've seen people from Olive zip through and then straight onto Melrose, and it it won't happen, so I'm very pleased. I'm very pleased, I will be in support of the project.
Commissioner Hastings.
Uh I also think it looks like a good project, and I like the improvements that they've made. No other concerns.
Okay, uh Commissioner Graham?
Um I agree with Commissioner Kramer's comments, I think they've really done a good job of updating, and I will also be supporting the project.
Hey, Garrettson.
Yes, just one, one question, did I see a ramp there?
Oh, a ramp?
With uh, or was it just uh a fence or on the side over by Olive? Or is that just to protect the uh?
I see, we have quite a bit of drop between uh one street and the other, and there's a stair currently there on the site, so we are maintaining that, we're going to be uh of course improving it to AD standards and providing a new a new rail for that stair.
Okay, the rail is what I was looking at.
Right.
Um that will be ADA compliant, of course, and
Of course.
And uh but there is, there are stairs there now, I didn't remember that.
There are.
Okay, all right, thank you, uh I I agree, I think what you've done is has been very positive, especially the landscaping and the overall appearance.
Very good, uh Commissioner Looney?
Um no comments, but there will be a a nice uh refreshing look on that corner because it is heavily traveled, so I would be in support of it.
And Commissioner Aguilar?
Um very much in support, it's long overdue, um just getting back to Commissioner Garrettson's question, um probably a good idea to think about uh preventing skateboarders using those ramps, um that's gonna be an issue there, I think, so, I mean I s- I support the project completely, but that might be something the owner might want to think about, so it's gonna be a nuisance.
All right, if there are no more discussion, are we ready for a motion? Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um I recommend um P one-nine dash zero-zero-three-six um adopting resolution twenty-twenty-one as presented.
I'll second it. All right, uh it's been moved and second to approve uh the use permit uh amendment and site development plan. Um Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Chairman Rosler, your vote, please.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, uh Mr. Pollock and Ms. Marks, uh good job on your application, and and we look forward to the improvement on that corner, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night. All right, good night, thank you.
All right, we will now move on to our next public hearing, if we're ready, Ms. Chow?
Uh oh, yes, I'll just give you one second here so I can put the uh the presentation up, hold on for just one moment here. I need to close this one here.
Chairman?
Yes.
Uh I'm gonna need to recuse myself uh of this item, because I own property in the nearby area.
Okay.
So uh Commissioner Aguilar, if you just want to mute and turn off your video until we're done with this item, is that all right?
Yeah.
All right.
Any other disclosures? All right.
Okay, I'm trying to get the presentation up, but there's something going on here on the Zoom side of things. So let me see here. I'm not sure what this is doing here. Just bear with me for a second as I try to figure this out. There is always something, all right, let me see. Yeah, it's not allowing me to pull it up. Boy. Let me see here. Yeah, I'm not, it's not allowing me to screen share um John's presentation, I don't know what is going on here. It's just saying that uh somehow there's a disabled uh screen sharing here, so I don't know what happened.
Let me see if I can do it from my computer, Patsy, hang on in here.
It says host disabled participant screen sharing?
All right, let me just hold on one second.
You are, you are still a co-host, right?
Yeah.
I'm not even sure that I am a host anymore. Uh-oh, I've been demoted. Jeez, John is.
You need an IT degree before you can work for the city now.
I guess so, I'm gonna go back to school. Uh it looks.
It says you've disa- the host is disabled participant screen sharing.
Oh, and and I think uh, oh, I think IT left, but somehow I'm not longer the host anymore. Oh, brother, geez, no, that's not good. Are you not hosting as well, John? I don't see you hosting this.
No, City of Vista is host, whoever that is.
That would have been uh IT staff, so somehow it got disabled.
Okay, so uh we're gonna go without a presentation if the commission's okay with that?
Oh, boy.
I I think, I mean, a a video presentation, I'll still put up a presentation on the project.
Right, I think since it's ju- uh general plan amendment, uh there's really not a whole bunch of need for a a a video presentation, so commissioners, I'm okay with it, if you guys are. Anyone object? All right, Mr. Conley?
So thank you, the 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 commissioners have all received the staff report, I know, with a project location, uh one-thirty-five Hillside Terrace. The property is about nineteen thousand square feet, um located up behind the Chin's uh restaurant property there off of Hillside Terrace and East Vista Way. Uh it's a few hundred feet off the street uh up the hill from um the intersection behind the commercial center. The subject property has been uh zoned commercially for a number of years, based on the review of the zoning map that staff did uh since the mid-eighties, this property's been zoned commercially. Uh I believe that um probably when some of the old zoning maps were created, uh there was no um accounting for topography and some of the other issues that exist in real life, and on a paper map, it's real easy to draw commercial corridors around areas where you may or may not be able to see what's actually there, so it looks like this property was incorporated into a commercial zone without regard to the topography, and if you've been to the site.
Jamie, Jamie, James, I'm so glad you're still there.
Patsy, you're still on.
Patsy, you're, you're.
Hey, thanks. Anyway, the the uh the property's been zoned commercially for a long time, there's been a residence on it, it was used in a commercial fashion for some time, but there was never permits pulled, and so um we've had this continuing non-conforming use issue where residential uses have been in the property um and and uh attempting to pull permits or done improvements and had complaints, and then gone back to attempt to pull permits and weren't able to because it was a commercially zoned property. So we finally now have a property owner, Mr. Baker, who has applied to um change the zoning from the commercial designations. The general plan is commercial neighborhood, and the zoning is C-one, which is the corresponding zone. The request is to change to um medium-low density, which is the residential corresponding general plan designation for uh the R-one zone, which is a ten thousand square foot minimum lot size. The proposed zoning and general plan designations would bring the property into conformity with the residential use, which is the intended use of the owner. It's what the structures that were built on the site were really intended for, and what they've been improved for, and um, you know, lacking the zoning, uh it's still a non-conforming site. Um so staff has provided uh the uh resolution, as you know, the planning commission uh makes recommendations to the council on changes to the general plan and zoning. Uh the the commission's asked to make formal recommendations with regard to general plan policies and compatibility with adjacent land uses. Those are included in the uh resolution that's before the commission this evening. Um the applicant is here, I know he doesn't have a formal presentation, but he's also available for any questions if the commission has him. Um and with that, staff's recommending approval of this general plan and zone change, and I'm available for any questions.
Very good, uh questions for staff or the applicant, uh Commissioner Kramer?
Uh just, just one, it's not really a question, it's a clarification or for me and understanding. So we're trying to, by doing this, we're we're righting a wrong, we're we're correcting something that that should be correct residential.
Correct, in staff's opinion, yes.
Okay, and I agree because of what's what's around the neighborhood, and then also from the staff presentation, I see that there that Mr. Baker is not, uh at least in the short sight, had grant, wanting to change anything else about this piece of property, is that correct?
That's correct, he wants to use the single-family home for his parents.
Perfect, um I have no other questions, I will be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hastings, questions for staff or applicant?
Uh no, I think this is a an appropriate change to make.
Commissioner Graham?
Um I just had a question, I think it's of staff, in in looking at the uh the general plan map, um you've got commercial, and then we're changing this to medium uh low-density residential, was there any thought of changing it to uh simply medium density, which is what you see um adjacent, or is it the the ele- the the topography of the property, not make it conducive? Uh so that was my question, was that considered, and um uh what was the reasoning for going with the um the low-density?
It's a good question.
Medium-low.
It was considered, uh the reason that staff went with the lower-density recommendation is that we didn't want to see further subdivision of the property following the zone change, and the property's about nineteen thousand square feet, so you wouldn't, if it ten thousand square foot minimum lot size, you wouldn't be able to subdivide it further with the R-one zone, that's the reason for the staff recommendation.
Okay, because normally you probably wouldn't put a, you know, um, you know, low-density right next to the commercial area, but um I that that's, that makes sense, and uh it's uh, you know, not that easy a piece of property either, so uh thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Patsy.
Commissioner Garrettson, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Uh no questions.
All right, Commissioner Looney?
Um just one question for staff, um a few months ago, there was uh I don't know if it was a formal application or not, but to take that corner and turn it into a um a gas station. And that proposal was that nineteen thousand-foot parcel excluded from that proposed gas station development? Or was it made a part of?
No, it was, it was excluded, that that property uh is the triangular piece that's directly below the project site that you can see on the screen, but it did not include this this par- property.
Okay, that was the only question that I had for staff.
Uh Commissioner Aguilar, any questions of staff or the applicant? Oh, he's not here, I'm sorry, he's recused, all right, um uh you can tell Commissioner Graham and I are uh ex-planners because I had the same question, why what, why wasn't medium-density being uh part of the application, and 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 staff uh answered that. So that concludes the commi- commissioner's comments and questions, uh I'm gonna open the public hearing. Uh Ms. Chow is, i- if you're here to speak on this item, let me get this right this time, if you're here to speak on this item, uh in the Zoom meeting, there's a raised hand, if you would click on that, and Ms. Chow can recognize you, and uh you have three minutes to provide uh testimony to the commissioner on on this application.
And uh, thank you, Chairman Rosler, I believe is the owner, I'm gonna ask you to, or allow you to talk, I'm not sure if you're here for John's item, I don't see the name or Kevin, oh, I see Kevin raising the hand here, hold on just for a second, and uh let me promote you here so you can actually speak here and be part of the meeting, go ahead, Kevin.
Oh, thank you, I just wanted to say thank you for everybody's time and hearing what we're doing, it's uh I think like John said, it's something that kind of makes sense for the property, and I just want to say thanks for everybody's time, I don't really have anything to add.
Thank you.
Any other, Ms. Chow, anyone else wishing to provide testimony?
Uh I don't see any other raised hands at this time, uh Chairman Rosler.
Okay, so then I will close the public hearing, do we have to, do we need to have additional discussion about the item, or are we ready for a motion? Okay, all right, would someone like to make a motion on the on the general plan amendment and zone change?
Sure, I'll move staff recommendation.
Right, it's been moved to recommend to the city council the general plan amendment and zone change, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Kramer, seconds. Uh Ms. Chow, will you call the roll, please?
Sure, uh Chairman Rosler, your vote, please?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilar?
Uh he's.
Oh, I'm sorry, he recused. So the motion passes six-zero with one recusal.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome, so Ms. Chow will move on to the early design review?
Yes, and let me try this one more time, and keep your fingers crossed. Let's see here.
Ah, very good.
Okay.
So it's Mr. Russler's uh project?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Michael, you are on.
Perfect, uh thank you, Chairman, and members of the planning commission, uh the item before unit is an early design review for the proposed Alavista uh project, the project number is P twenty-one dash zero-zero-three-eight. Next slide. Uh this is a a little overview of the early design review process, uh the EDR provides an opportunity for the planning commission to provide uh uh comments uh based on a preliminary scope of a project. Uh the proposal has not been routed or reviewed uh by city staff. Uh the applicant will be available to answer specific questions in regard to the project design and the overall thought process associated with this proposal. Uh there'll be no formal review or action required as part of the EDR item tonight. Next slide. Staff has received a preliminary proposal for a four-story mixed-use development, which would include approximately twenty-eight hundred square feet of commercial tenant space and twenty-four apartment units on a point-nine-two acre site. Uh that site is located on the southwest corner of Civic Center Drive and Eucalyptus. That site is located on the southwest corner of Civic Center Drive and Eucalyptus Avenue. The subject site is three legal parcels currently developed with two single-family homes. Next slide. Here's an aerial photograph of the subject site. Again, .92 acres that currently develop with two single-family homes as well as vacant land. Next slide. Surrounding land uses include the Vista Magnet Middle School to the north across Eucalyptus Avenue, the City of Vista Civic Center, as well as a church to the east across Civic Center Drive, a two-story office building to the south, as well as single-family homes and vacant land to the west. The general plan land use designation for the site is mixed use, which allows for commercial and residential uses up to 40 dwelling units per acre. In regards to zoning, the subject site maintains a zoning designation of downtown Vista specific plan, specifically located within the Civic Center subject, sub-district, excuse me. This would allow for a maximum density of 40 dwelling units per acre and a maximum building height of 60 feet. The proposed project would require site development plan, sequer review, as well as landscape review. The proposed mixed-use development would include 24 apartments, as well as 2,800 square feet of commercial tenant space, all within a four-story building. The apartment building, apartment units would be one and two-bedroom units. The proposed density for the project would be 26.09 dwelling units per acre, and the project would have a maximum height of 53 feet. As indicated on the site plan, the .92 acre site would be developed with one four-story building located towards the street frontages with parking located at the rear of the site. The site has been designed to provide a total of 52 parking spaces, which complies with the specific plan requirement for the proposed uses, which would be a total of 52 parking spaces. In regards to site amenities, the proposed site would provide for a multipurpose room, a common outdoor gathering spaces, private garden, as well as private patios. The proposed building has been designed around a contemporary architectural style and would include gray stucco exterior finishes with articulated walls that would include metal storefront, stone accents, as well as decorative trellises. The roof would primarily be flat with open trellis elements. And on this slide before you, on the left-hand side is the north elevation facing Eucalyptus Avenue. And on the right would be the south elevation facing the adjacent office building. On this slide, to the left, we have the east elevation, which would be facing Civic Center Drive. And on the right would be the west elevation facing the adjacent residential, single-family homes. The first floor plan has been designed to maintain a total of 2,800 square feet of commercial tenant space, as well as the apartment elevator lobby. The second floor would provide for 10 apartment units, as well as common open space areas. The third floor has been designed to provide 10 park, apartment units, as well as common open space area. As, and the fourth floor would provide for four apartment units, a multipurpose room, as well as a common open space area. Staff is requesting the planning commission provide comments to the applicant in regards to design of the proposed project. At this time, the applicant would like to introduce themselves and answer any questions in regards to the project design. That concludes my formal presentation, and I'm here to answer questions as well.
All right. Commissioner Aguilar is back with us, and so we'll move on to questions of staff or the applicant. Commissioner Kramer?
I have no questions at this time. I, I think it's very nice, and I think it's going to look great on that corner. My only comments. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hastings?
Just a couple of things. One was, I wondered about your thinking around just having one and two-bedroom apartments.
That came from the client's program requirements. We were given a program from the client about what he wanted. We looked at larger units, but they took up a lot of room on the, on the site. We couldn't get the number in that he wanted. He had a formula that he had prepared. So he chose the one and two bedrooms over the, the three-bedroom and four-bedrooms.
Okay, is this client like a, a major developer or something?
I wouldn't call him a major developer, no. He's, he's a small developer.
Okay. I, I just found the, I don't know what you'd call it, the shade structure at the front corner?
Yes.
Remarkable. I wasn't exactly sure what it was constructed of. Is it, does it have circular holes in it? Or how does that work?
Yeah, it's, actually, it's evolved about 35 times over the last six months. What we wanted to do was create an interesting form that provided shade. Also, it was reflective of the circular plaza that we want to put at the intersection there to reflect the plaza across the street at the Civic Center. So we had a reflection of those two open spaces. And we've gone through a lot of different design ideas with the owner on what kind of element would attract attention, be respectful of the Civic Center, also provide shade. So it's, as, right now, it is a metal structure that is partially open to create filtered shade to that plaza and to the seats and pedestrians in that area, the seating areas.
What color is it? I couldn't, I wasn't quite clear.
It's like a stainless steel color.
Oh, okay. I think it's an interesting building. It's, it's different from some of the other ones we've been receiving recently, and I kind of like that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grimm? I'm sorry?
That's okay.
Okay. Commissioner Grimm, comments, questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for the applicant. One is, what is your marketing information towards the, you know, the commercial? The leasehold, I think it's 2,800 square feet. What do you see going there? And then second question was, was there any consideration for actually having the commercial at the corner to kind of engage the street? And you can argue that both ways, but, you know, what engages the street better? But I just wonder what the thought process was on that? Were those, was that considered at all?
On the first question, I apologize, but I don't know what the financial considerations are for the number of units, the size of the units, and things like that. We were given that information by the owner as the program requirements. So I don't know what the marketability of those spaces are. I'm just an architect, so.
No, 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 no. I wasn't asking the market. I was just basically asking, does the applicant have anything that he thinks might go in there? Like, you know, a, a real estate office, a coffee shop, just something in general.
I apologize. For, for the commercial spaces, yes, he does. He's looking for restaurants. And, you know, I don't want to say fast food, but both a fast food and a combination of sit-down restaurants. Obviously, because of its location next to the Civic Center and to the school across the street, he wants to be able to cater to that market. So it would be eating establishments mostly.
And the second question was, was there any thought of actually putting the leasehold commercial area right on the corner?
Yeah, we, there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one, conceptually from the beginning, we saw that intersection as being very important. And we wanted to create an open plaza at that point, and we created the curved space. The commercial space wants to use that space for seating. We also want to be able to have seating for people using transit and also people just walking around wanting to sit down and enjoy the day. So the commercial space spurred from that central courtyard, that plaza, if you will. And we thought we'd put them close to the street because we wanted to attract attention for those spaces. And also in the guidelines, we saw that the guidelines required or recommended an interaction between the street and those commercial spaces. So we wanted to get them relatively close and open them up with large windows. Now, in addition to that, we wanted to put the commercial spaces in front of the parking because we didn't want to fill the front of the building, the front of the site up with parking. So we wanted to get the parking at the rear of the structure, so the commercial spaces became that buffer.
Okay, just, just to follow up with that, sometimes, you know, for commercial property, putting the parking behind, I'm glad you did here because I don't think it would be that attractive to have your parking on in the street. But sometimes that makes it obviously tough to make commercial work. But I assume that you, you hope, you know, the, the, a lot of walk-up traffic may occur there, you know, from City Hall and, and, you know, no reason why it shouldn't work.
That is the hope. And also with long-term goals of less cars and more alternative methods of transportation, we're hopeful that the car and the parking is not as, as primary as, as foot traffic and other needs.
Great, thank you for your answer.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Garrettson, questions for staff or the applicant?
Yes, actually, a few. This building is going to be roughly 19 feet taller than the office building next door, which is going to put this building higher than the front, or higher than the houses behind them. So the houses behind them are actually going to be looking up at this, at least that next street back. So I would suggest that there be some consideration as to what those people are saying, since this building is going to, since those people are going to be looking up at the building. And then the higher elevations, I would be concerned about what they're going to see looking down on the roof in terms of HVAC and so forth.
Okay. Would you like me to answer that?
Yes.
Okay. So the building is 53 feet high. So I respectfully disagree that the neighbors behind are looking up because the total height of this building is at datum 402, 402 feet above mean side, high tide, or mean ceiling, excuse me. The top of the bluff is about three feet lower than that. So when you're standing, looking from those houses, you're looking over the building. Now, I've got to say, it is close. You're absolutely right. But they are not looking into the back of the building, other than if they were looking down, yes, they would be looking at the back of that rear portion of the building. So the actual height of the building is very close to the bluff top level of the houses above. Where, that was a consideration. We wanted to try to make sure that this building didn't block any views. So it's trying to get those spaces driven into the 40 to 50 foot that we were shooting for. And one of the other considerations was we didn't want to have a rooftop full of air conditioning units. So if you were above it from those houses, you wouldn't be looking across a sea of mechanical equipment. We wanted to try to incorporate that equipment within the spaces and below. So we had an option of, do we create a larger interstitial space between the levels of the building? Or do we put the equipment on the roof? So we opted to raise the building up a little bit higher so that we didn't have something ugly to look at from the homes above.
So the houses, the, the next level up, those houses will be looking down on the top of the building?
Portions of the building, yeah. It's, it's broken up at the, the main, the upper level, the fourth floor, is relatively small as far as the apartments. There's two, two nodes, one on each side of the intersection, if you will. So we have terrace covers, trellises, uncovered walkways. So those would be at that top height.
Okay.
The units themselves would be below that.
Gotcha.
Hopefully, I'm making myself clear. I apologize.
And as far as the access and egress, this would be right in, right out on Civic Center, but either right in or left out and then on, on Eucalyptus, correct?
Correct. Yes, we wanted to split those entryways and exits as far away from the center of the intersection as possible.
All right. There is, there is a lot of foot traffic on the vacant part of that property. I think it would be nice if you at least considered who's using that. And I doubt, quite frankly, that you're going to be able to do anything about it once it's built. But it would be nice to at least look at who's using that. And I know it's private property, but it'd be nice to look at if there's some accommodation there.
Well, thank you for bringing that up because that's something we were considering when we first visited the site. We saw what was quite clearly a pathway that went down the hill in a zigzag pattern. And it looked like it had been used for many, many years. Obviously, our building is going to be in the way of that. But I don't believe that means that it can't be accommodated because if you'll notice the way we laid out the whole site, there's a central core that goes right through the middle from the back of the lot to the, the front plaza. So the question then perhaps I can bring up to you is, love to work with you on this, is how do we create a pathway that goes from the residential area above and around or through the property? Because we can accommodate that pedestrian access with the additional stair structure that we have in the middle of the building. We created a, a center stair structure because the code requires two, one on either end. But we put a third one in, number one, to make it more convenient for the residents of the, of the units. But also there's stairs that go down from the top to the bottom and could be accommodated by people coming off the top of the hill. The problem we have with that is how do we handle liability with a natural pathway connected to a physical series of stairs and ramps to accommodate the handicap and, and eliminate liability, if that's even possible? So thank you for bringing that up because I wanted to pose that to you. If that's something that you wanted to consider, I don't know how we do it, but we're certainly open to creating that ability.
I have no idea how to do it, but I think it would be nice to at least consider it and think of those neighbors in the back. And I imagine that's a lot of kids going to school.
Yeah, right. There, there would be a way to get them down on the backside, but I, you know, again, is it safe? I, I don't know. Probably not. But we're open to that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, I've got a couple items. The one, real simple one, Mark, is on your preliminary grading plan, where we have the sculpture, the canopy sculpture, this grading plan shows, let's say, two rectangular arcs that are the makeup, that circle. And on your architectural site plan on sheet A1.2, they're more of a teardrop shape. So it's just that what I see on the grading plan doesn't match the architectural plan. I think what you have drawn on the architectural plan is much more aesthetic. And I think it is keeping in that theme of that whimsical look and that canopy. But that was just a minor point, I think, between the architecture and the, the civil drawings. In the back of the property, we've got some, some very steep slopes that are about 75% gradient. And on the back wall, we've got, or the back of the property, rather, we've got two walls with a vertical change of about 28 feet. And then along that south property line, again, we've got two walls with about a 20-foot maximum height. Rather than going with a concrete, concrete block wall, you might entertain maybe a shotcrete wall because the gradient is so severe. Again, I don't know how far those cables have, those deadman ties have to go into the hillside, but it might free up some space. But just, that was just one thought.
Okay.
And then Commissioner Garrettson, as far as trying to link that residential area through the middle of that property, from the top of the back retaining wall to the building pad, we've got. through the middle of that property, from the top of the back retaining wall to the building pad, we've got about twenty feet. So the homeowner is going to have to make accommodations to build a path that's twenty feet below the building pad. And so I think in theory, it might work really well practically. To build anything on that steep of a slope, it just, it doesn't work. So, um, just kind of give the other side to what you had brought up, uh, Commissioner Garrettson. But, um, I think it's a fun building, um, I think you've got some sculptural things happening, uh, not only on the corner, but on each side. Tough lot, because you've got two front exposures. But the way that you've broken it up, I think is very creative, um. Circulation was a real challenge, I know, um.
You can say that again.
I think you've dialed it in pretty nicely, and I think it's going to work really well. And as far as the height, um, I just don't have an issue with it, because even on, um, that adjacent commercial property, the top of that roof is going to be around four hundred in elevation. And if we're at four oh two, really, because of the pad elevation of what you're proposing, the ridge line of the adjacent commercial building and your roof line of this one, they're going to be really, visually, they're going to be the same, so I, I don't have an issue with that at all, but, um, I think it's good, you've got some push-pull, you've got a lot of shadows taking place, um. I think it works, I think it really does, so I think you've done a good job, Mark.
Thank you, very kind of, appreciate it.
Very good, uh, Commissioner Aguirre, any, any questions for the applicant?
Um, I do have one question, um. How exactly, I've been looking at the parking over and over, and if you could just explain how the parking's going to work? Is it, is there any covered parking at all?
Yes, the, the main parking area is underneath the second floor of the building, so.
That's what I thought.
Completely covered, the upper parking terrace is open.
How many are uncovered?
Uh, well, we have some solar panels up on the upper top, uh, upper level. I don't know exactly how many, do you know how many parking spaces are covered? I would say most of them, I don't know if we know what number.
Okay.
Sure, we can get back to you with the answer of.
You really answered my main question.
Twenty covered and twenty open, sorry.
What was that?
Twenty covered and twenty open.
Okay.
Twenty-eight open, sorry, sorry.
Fifty-two total, right?
Twenty-eight are covered and twenty are open to the sky.
Is there fifty, how many parking spaces are there?
Fifty-two, fifty-two, we have four handicap, which, so.
Oh.
And the handicapped are also covered.
Those are covered.
So we've actually got thirty-two covered, twenty-eight being normal, uh, four being handicap, and twenty are open.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Oh, it's all right. I think it's a nice, uh, compliment to our City Hall, our Civic Center, um, you know, the design looks great.
Thank you.
I, I, I support it.
Well, we hope you're proud of it.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, um, my turn, um. Does the applicant and you, as his architect, have experience with doing mixed-use projects? Have they done mixed-use projects before?
Yes, they have.
Um, did they consider live-work units for the commercial and the residential?
Um, I apologize, I don't know the answer to that question.
All right, um. Mr. Conley, or Mr. Ressler, I'm sorry, uh, there's no parking allowed on either, uh, Civic Center or Eucalyptus, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, how are deliveries to the commercial going to be handled?
I was going to say, on the site plan, you can see at the, uh, northwest corner, there's a loading area sixteen by twenty-nine adjacent to, uh, Eucalyptus Drive. Um, that area would be used for, for loading purposes?
Okay. All right, all right, very good, um. One of the things with the speed of traffic on, on, uh, on Civic Center, uh, instead of using the city's, uh, normal curb cut, I, uh, suggest you look at doing the radius return, the alley return, it would make pulling in there a bit, uh, bit faster for people and they wouldn't have to slow down as much, um. So the commercial parking is behind the commercial buildings, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, and so people will get, get out and walk around to the front, okay? Um, one of the questions, one of the concerns I have is if you're going to have food preparation in there, uh, is the ventilation. Yeah, especially with residential up above, uh, and I'd be curious in how you're going to handle that.
So most, well, that's a good question, uh, most of the ventilation will be to the roof, um, but there will be, um, just natural smells coming from the restaurants wafting up. Um, the airflow typically runs from northwest to southeast. So generally speaking, I think, uh, most of the air movement will be away from the building, but there are going to be um, just inevitably, uh, restaurant smells and things like that to go along with having a restaurant below you, so it's a, it's an urban, uh, setting and, and environment.
All right.
And not every.
Kind of mitigate as much as we can.
And, and my experience in mixed use, not everybody is, uh, uh, can live in a mixed-use environment, um, I had a project down in Chula Vista where the, one of the residents wasn't happy with, uh, two o'clock in the morning, restaurant employees dumping the trash. So it's going to be important for the residents moving in there to know what uses are being proposed or planned for the commercial area and, um, uh, that they understand what, uh, what their environment's going to be like, um. Uh, I don't know, Patsy or Michael, can we pull up the floor plans, uh, real quick? Especially the residential, either the, I, I don't know if it's the second floor or first floor of residential. Oh, let's, okay, uh, it's kind of covered up by everybody. But outside of units, uh, two-ten and two-oh-eight, there appears to be an, an open area?
Yes.
And that's going to be covered by the third floor, won't it?
Yes, it will.
And so it's just going to be an open concrete area in, in that section of the, uh, of the building?
Yeah, we are cutting back some of these open spaces, I don't think we need as much, so they will open up to below. But for conceptual purposes, we, we just left them in. Yeah, it's, it's open and it's usable by the tenants.
And I, Commissioner Rosler, there's also a, uh, an open deck with the trellis, uh, on the other end of the, that floor as well at the northwest corner of the building?
Right, okay. It's just saying that there were some pretty large, uh, pa- open paved areas that nothing was happening in, so. Um, and I looked, and I apologize if you provided it and I couldn't find it, but what are the, what's the square footage of the units?
So the one bedrooms are seven-twenty, seven-hundred-and-twenty, and the two bedrooms are nine, nine-hundred.
Okay, very good, um. And, uh, you didn't provide a landscaping plan, so we kind of reserve judgment that we, once you provide that, then we, that's open for us to comment on, so just a heads up on that. So, yeah, my, my biggest concern was the, the, the commercial and how it's going to be used and, um, how it's going to interact, uh, with the, the residential space. Um, ventilation, noise, smells, all of that, all of those things. So, um, that concludes my comments, Ms. Chow, we have, uh, we normally take public comment on, uh, on the project, uh, do we have anyone that wishes to speak? That would raise their hand?
Yeah, I don't see anybody listed here as far as attendees, Chairman Rosler.
Okay, all right, so commissioners, we move on to, uh, our, our review of the, uh, of the project, and we have our four, five standards. So, uh, instead of calling on each one of you individually, why don't I mention the standard, uh, which is the site design and grading? Uh, any additional comments you want to make to the applicant on that, on that, uh, aspect of the project? Not seeing anyone? Okay, how about the architecture and floor plans? No, it.
Oh, wait.
Sure. Go ahead, Commissioner Hastings.
I'm never sure about how much we're supposed to be commenting on interior floor plans.
They're part of the application, if you've got a concern, you should express it.
In the one-bedroom apartments, the bathroom access is, um, multiple and a little complicated. And, um, I speak from experience because I have it in my very own home. And, but, one of the things that I know is that when you have too many doors in the middle of the night, sometimes you run into them. So, I, I mean, I'm serious about this, there, there are, this is a one-bedroom apartment, and I'm not sure that there's a real need for a completely en suite bathroom access from the bedroom. So if you take that one out, you just have, um, the hallway door, which is not quite so, I'm not looking at it now, now I got lost, but, um, there, I feel like there's one too many doors to that bathroom.
Understood, I, we, we understand that comment, um, thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments on the architect or floor plans? All right, how about the parking traffic and, uh, the building circulation? Uh, seen no one, we'll move on to landscaping.
I have my hand up.
Oh, sorry, th- there it is, yes.
Yeah, I just kind of go back to the parking again, um, is there any, uh, access to apartments from the parking, you know, directly from parking, or is it, how are they accessing their apartments?
Uh, most of it's going to be through the stair systems or the elevator at the front.
Outdoor.
There is, at the top of the bu- of the site, there's a parking area that goes directly to that upper level. So. So the parking actually terraces up the hill because of the hill. Uh, and that upper level is accessible directly from that parking space.
So just a few of the s- place, a few of the places are going to have direct access, is what you're saying?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, direct access to either stairwells or the elevator, but there's not direct access into each uni- individual unit?
Right, right, no, I understand. So, okay, so. So, anybody that parks at their, the apartment complex, they're basically going to be exposed to the elements, to the outside, the entire time.
Where they're open to the sky, yes.
Okay. That's, that's, that's kind of, I guess, my only concern. Um, I know from previous experience that that's going to be one of the mayor's concerns as well. Um, and council's concern, so. I know that, that's a, that would be a major change to this project, but, uh, and other than that, I, I really do like the project. And I think it's a great addition to that corner, it's a tough corner to build on. Um, but that's probably my, my biggest concern is having at least some units that have direct access, uh, to parking. So, thank you.
All right. Move along to landscaping and amenities, uh, we really weren't provided a whole, whole bunch of information on landscaping, um. I, so we were, uh, judgment on that, uh, until that's provided to us. Uh, I would assume with one and two bedrooms that we're looking at adults living here, we're not going to have, uh, children, so as amenities, uh, you, you're going to want to orient those to the adults that are going to be living there, so. Um, any other comments from the commissioners on landscaping or amenities?
Well, is this project, the omitted, I mean, is it, um, exempted from the amenities? Because it's mixed use?
No, uh, they're, they're still required to have, uh, with the project of twenty-five units or less, have one, uh, amenity per the design guidelines.
Okay, okay.
All right. Any other comments overall on the project, I, I tend to agree with the other, uh, comments made by the commissioners, that, that this will be a great addition to our corner, I'm a little appreh- concerned about how the commercial is going to work, um, we've kind of struggled with ground floor commercial here recently, so we'll, um, we'll see how that goes, but, um. All right, so this is not a public hearing, we're not taking a vote, those are our, our comments, so Mr. Land, that's, uh, uh, those are our comments to you tonight, uh, you should take those and, uh, go forward with your project, all right?
Oh, thank you very much for your comments, appreciate it.
You're welcome, all right. So, um, commissioners, that ends our, our public, uh, uh, hearings and our discussion items, and we move on now to, uh, comments from other commissioners. The commissioners have. And Mr. Conley, your report.
Oh, wait.
Wait, 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 Commissioner Hastings.
I just, uh, was talking to a member of my family about ADUs, and I just wondered what kind of, uh, progress or applications have been coming up for Vista for ADUs?
So.
Probably for you, John, yeah.
Yeah, actually, Michael could probably answer that question better than me, because he's been tracking it for the housing element.
Ah.
Yeah, lately, I mean, we've just been inundated by, uh, inquiries, uh, we've had quite a few applications come in. I've seen that the state, uh, changed the, uh, the laws associated with those units in the past year. Uh, that's just increased the, the popularity of, uh, of, and the ability to, uh, to ins- install one of these type of units on a single-family residential lot, so we've seen a lot of activity. I actually worked the counter on Monday, and I probably took about at least fifteen inquiries in regards to the abilities and the, the limitations and the requirements associated with them.
Wow.
What are, Michael, what are our numbers annually right now, we're at like fifty or sixty, somewhere in there?
Yeah, I think, uh, it was, uh, fifty-nine last year, as I recall.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, excuse me, fifty-one, I'm sorry, Patsy.
Yeah, we were in the, we were in the like four, five, six a year before that, so it's a significant difference.
Commissioner Garrettson? Have we defined where ADUs can go in terms of a citywide map or zoning or?
The citywide map is a little bit confusing because it includes some specific plan areas that, um, don't, you know, fully define on the zoning map whether they're single-family or multifamily or commercial, so we unfortunately don't have a good map to point someone to that in- includes a full comprehensive, you know, um, visual depiction of the areas that you could put an ADU in, but I can tell you this, if your property's owned single-family or multifamily, you can put an ADU on it.
Any of them mixed use?
It's all mixed use, yeah, mixed use could be a unit anyway.
And they don't affect the lot coverage as well?
Don't affect the lot coverage, they don't affect the density calculation, they're allowed by right under state law in any single or multifamily zone.
How about sending to the property that would be taken up by present? How about, send each of the property that would be taken up by present resident and an ADU? Are there limitations there?
You would have to meet the normal setbacks. The ADU requirements are four feet from the side or rear property line and you'd have to meet those setbacks. Um, but other than the setback provisions for a detached unit, you, there are no other lot coverage standards that can apply.
So citywide, basically?
Yes, that's, it's statewide, actually.
Statewide.
John, did you say four feet was the setback?
Four feet from the side and rear property line is what it states in the state law.
I guess that, to, 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 uh, em, uh, I guess emphasize the, the change we've seen. I think it was in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, we got a handful of these applications. Last year, we got sixty-nine applications and we had fifty-one permits issued for, for those type of units. And we're probably gonna see a substantial, uh, substantial number of units, uh, proposed this year as well.
I'd say fifty percent of my work are ADUs.
Really?
And one of the things though, too, they're very expensive to build.
Yeah.
Um, people think that because they're small, they're affordable. Kids building a, a new house on a very small footprint and so the cost per square foot is way up there. You still have to deal with drainage, you still have to deal with, um, bringing in the appropriate power, uh, because a lot of these smaller homes only have a hundred and twenty-five amp electrical service. So they gotta upgrade, uh, the electrical if they're in gas. Usually some of the gas lines are so small that they will accommodate a tankless water heater. So it's, the cost per square foot is, is up there, so they're not affordable.
Let, let me stop right here. Amanda has her hand raised, so I'm, I'm, wanna make sure that we're not wandering in the wilderness.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think if there is an interest in a, an item that's agendized to discuss ADUs in general and how the city is treating those and the state laws that pertain to them, um, there should be a request from a commissioner to have that discussion because, you know, with commissioner comment, we risk it becoming a full-blown discussion on, on agendized topics. So I, I'd recommend that if there's an interest in having this item come back as a, an agendized topic, that request could be made. So it sounds like there is a lot of interest in it. Um, but we should keep the commissioner comment just to essentially what the commissioner's view is and there can be a short staff response, but not an extended discussion.
Um, on that note, uh, Mr. Conley, I saw that the council adopted an economic development strategy, uh, just recently. And I was wondering if we could get a report from you? Just, I, I don't think, I just need, I would like to see a general outline of what the council's opinion was, uh, on, and where the direction they wanna go. So I don't know, if you just wanna do that in a memo form? You wanna come back and do an oral presentation? Give us a copy of the?
I can, I can send you a memo, that's not a problem. I, there's a, a short, um, summary that the economic development director put together that has some bullet points. Um, but just to give you a brief overview, they, they generally looked at, um, targeting certain industries, um, in, in terms of job creation and business development. Um, that, then they're, they're looking at workforce education and partnerships with businesses to try to, you know, place people in jobs. And then probably most applicable to the commission is they wanna look at land use, um, issues moving forward with respect to the downtown areas or regional arts and entertainment center. Um, they wanna look at the, uh, high vacancy retail commercial centers in town uh, for potential repurposing or rezoning of those centers. Um, look at the business, Vista Business Park to consider if there's any policy or zoning changes that are appropriate there. And then, um, identify other commercial corridors or districts within the city that might need a look. And so what I have told the economic development director is these all kind of fall in line with the general plan update that we're anticipating, uh, starting later this year. And we'll be looking, you know, into these policies as part of that process and reporting back in specific economic development growth issues as part of that update. But I'll send you a memo that summarizes what was approved as part of the strategy that the council approved last week.
Thank you. And then, um, the north side of Oceanside Boulevard at Melrose? Do we know what's going on in Oceanside?
Yeah, so the city of Oceanside approved a, uh, a multi, um, use development. It's a mix of single and multifamily homes and a, a commercial building at the corner. So I think the northwest corner is gonna have a twenty thousand square foot commercial building. And then on the northeast corner, stretching all the way over to Sports Parkway, there's a residential component that's, uh, two hundred and sixty-some condos or townhomes and about thirty or forty single-family homes. I think it's three hundred units total.
Very good. Thank you for that. Um, and then commissioners, uh, before we get to Mr. Conley's, uh, whatever else report he has for you. Um, this unfortunately is Commissioner Kramer's last meeting with us. Her term, uh, expires at the end of the month and she has chosen not to re-up. So, uh, I just wanted to recognize her tonight. She has, was on the commission when I came on and was, uh, definitely a guiding light to me. Uh, I have, uh, appreciated her, her wisdom and, uh, her counsel in, uh, in the years that I, that, since I've been selected chairman, and I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm going to miss her very much. And, uh, so I, I thank Debbie for her years of service. She's been here a long, I don't know, is it okay to say a long time? She was here the last time we did the general plan and so she sat through those hundreds of hours of meetings all over the city, uh, figuring out what land use should go where. So, uh, a big debt of gratitude, uh, is owed her by, by this commission and, and the city. So just thank you, Debbie, gonna miss you.
Thank you. My first planning commission meeting was North Coast Church.
Wow.
Chairman, can I say something?
Sure.
So Debbie was here when, uh, I got on a planning commission the first time, back in oh-three or oh-four, oh-three I think it was. And of course she's here the second time and the entire time I was in city council. So I'd like to thank you for your service to the community and to the city of Vista. Um, it's much appreciated and, and you'll definitely be missed, Debbie, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think what we need to do is simply reject her resignation.
She can't resign. Do we have a motion? No. All right. Anyone else, uh, Commissioner Garrettson? Yes, I have a question for Mr. Conley. Um, any, any word on when we're going to be able to see the motel on Shatter Ridge proposal?
The motel on Shatter Ridge, you mean the?
The Marriott, I think it's the-
Marriott?
Marriott and the, um, storage unit?
Oh, so the storage unit project has not come back to us with any financial information yet. They're still working on some other deals that may negate the need for that use permit, so we'll see if they come back. Um, the Marriott is, they've promised us they're gonna submit plans in the summertime for construction, so that's what we're waiting on.
I think with the closing of, uh, Burlington Coat Factory, that is why I bring that up. Another vacant property there.
Yes, we are in discussions with the Burlington Coat Factory owners and, um, if they make any proposal, we'll be bringing them for the commissioner's city council.
Thank you.
Burlington move over to, uh, North County Square?
Yes, they just reopened across the way there, I think, a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, just saw the sign.
Yeah, they've done a nice job over there with the store, I think.
Is there a new restaurant going where Sunrise used to be?
There is a, uh, Mexican restaurant that is looking at going in where Sunrise Cafe was.
Mr. Conley, uh, your report, please.
Okay. I just wanna echo what all the commissioners said about Commissioner Kramer. Um, she's been on the commission almost as long as I've been at the city for twenty-plus years, so I really appreciate all of her hard work and dedication and extra hours she put in. As you all know, sometimes a bankless job and I just really appreciate all the work that you do, doing it. So thank you, Debbie, for all your good work.
Thank you very much.
Um, we won't have a meeting. Um, the next meeting in, uh, March the sixteenth is canceled. Uh, we will probably have a meeting, the first, uh, meeting in April, which is the sixth. And I believe we're gonna be hearing the housing element, Ms. Chow, is that correct? Yeah.
That's correct.
That's on the agenda to come back, uh, for the commission's, uh, formal recommendation. Um, and that's all I have. Unless, Patsy, you have anything that you wanted to provide an update on?
Yeah, just have a quick announcement, but I also wanted to thank Debbie for all your years of service on the commission. I, for sure, and I know I can speak for the other planners, uh, that are not here, uh, that we appreciate all the support over the years and understanding and for the feedback, all the great comments. So thank you, Debbie, we appreciate it. Um, quick announcement here, the Planning Commissioners Academy, uh, to be held again, once again, this time virtually, so it is different. Um, you know, everything else is different or everything is different these days, but it's gonna take place on March twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, thirty-first and the first. Uh, and so, uh, we would like to hear from you. If you have not attended recently, in the past ones that we had, uh, whether it was before COVID, um, obviously, um, if you're interested, please let me know. Uh, I would ask you to please let me know, uh, email or call me by March eleventh, uh, so that we have enough time to make sure that we can properly, you know, register everybody that wants to and, uh, probably give priority to those of you that have not gone. But certainly, uh, I would welcome, you know, if others wanna go and, uh, we usually have typically two spots, uh, to actually provide, uh, registration, pay for the registration, so just let me know, March eleventh.
Patsy, how much is the registration?
Uh, I think it's, looks like it's two hundred and fifty dollars for city planning commissioners.
Okay. So we have a fair amount of, uh, budget left over since we didn't go to anything this year, um, because of COVID. So if there are commissioners interested, we can certainly send more than two.
So John has given you the green light.
I would, I would recommend it.
Have the agenda?
Uh, there, I don't have it in front of me, Commissioner Garrettson, but, um, as usual, if you go to the Legal California City's website, they do have the information on their website, so you can certainly browse through the, yeah, the content.
When I send the memo, too.
Yeah, so it should be good. So just let me know by March eleventh, if you would, please, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay. One additional thought. Um, Debbie is our vice chair and so she'll be leaving at the end of, uh, um, at the end of the month. And so we will need, uh, to replace her as vice chair. So if you're interested in, uh, taking, uh, filling in for me when I'm gone and I don't know that we're going anywhere soon, um, uh, let me know and, uh, and we'll discuss it, so. So if there's nothing else, not seeing any other hands, oh.
Oh, Michael's not handing up.
No, I just wa, I just wanted to echo the, uh, Patsy and John said about, uh, Commissioner Kramer. You know, you've just been so inviting and, 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 uh, I've really appreciated working with you. You know, when I left my, from my career in Orange County, uh, it was a, a bit nerve-wracking coming here and, and starting a whole new chapter in my life and my career. And you and the rest of the commission made it a very easy transition and I just really appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, thank you very much.
But Ms. Chow, did you have something else?
Uh, nope.
Nope.
I'm good.
All right, if there is nothing else, uh, we will stand adjourned until April sixth. So, goodnight? See you, everybody.
Bye.
Goodnight.
Get outstated as soon as you can.
That's right.